Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a meeting of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the public and media consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-6, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundred and County Democrat, and sent to the clerks of Delaware Township, East Danwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard as shown on the agenda. Please rise for the flag salute. All right, Ms. Spitzer, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Here.
Dr. Charney?
Here.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Here.
Mr. Nickel?
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
And Mrs. Hughes?
Here.
Okay, we have correspondents as noted on the agenda, and then we'll move right into Dr. Moore's superintendent report.
Thank you. A few items on the agenda and items for discussion tonight for the board, so we can do that during my report if you like, or we can do that later on during board business, however you want to approach it. Few updates for us. We had a difficult day today, certainly, with a very difficult situation on campus, and some of the national controversy over abortion with all of its passion and temper played out on campus this afternoon. We'd been working in response to some rumors of a student demonstration potentially happening on campus, but using social media, students organized that gathering for today. And between blocks three and four during passing time there toward the end of the day, they began to come together outside of the football stadium with signs and slogans, and we had students representing both sides of that very difficult issue. But since it was passing time, the crowd grew quite large very quickly as students were walking by the scene on their way to class and stopped to join. Our plan in this kind of situation proceeds in two steps, and the first is that we work first always to ensure the safety of students gathered in a situation like that by sealing the affected area from the outside. Then, as the space is secure, we work to disperse the crowd to minimize the disruption. The crowd was quite large today. Again, passing time, it gathered a lot of folks during that time. So it took us some time to disperse everyone, but we were able to get everyone clear in time for buses to stage for afternoon dismissal. We're thankful, of course, to all of our staff who assisted and for our partners at Raritan Township Police Department who arrived to assist as well. The dilemma, I mean, we walk a very difficult line as we try to fulfill a mission that's really at the root of American public education. One of our founding principles in public education is to prepare students for active participation in civic society, to prepare them to take part. But we also have to ensure respect in that work. We have to ensure respect for one another and for community. And our students also our students also have to learn, they learn from what they see. And the anger that's infecting a lot of issues nationally is certainly infecting the kinds of events that we see in campus in the community. The kind of disrespect that they may see in the broader world is certainly influencing their behavior in situations that we see here. I'm deeply concerned about some of the behavior that we saw today. The rejection, the insults that some of our students showed to one another. We had to get between them to diffuse altercations on several occasions today, and we're investigating all of that behavior, and we'll take all and pursue all consequences as warranted. We're also always ready to work with students who want to be heard. They learn to be heard in our society by being heard, not just by talking about being heard and not just by simulating being heard, but actually being heard, and that's what makes high school such an important place, to learn how to become a citizen as they grow to voting age in this country. And it's not lost on any of us, that voter turnouts in our country are at an all-time or have been at various times over the past decade at an all-time low. So schools need to do something to create opportunities for civic learning. However, again, students need to learn, as I think many need to learn, that passions and temper can sharpen a message, but they can also overwhelm it and create not just hearing, but also harm. So as a school, we have lessons to learn on that and how we work with students who want to be heard in that way. We also have lessons to learn on communicating about these concerns. We never want to create undue alarm while we deal with situations that crop up fairly regularly here, but we do need to work more at informing and enlisting parents and staff to help us in these situations. Now, I know, and I've been in a lot of conversations over the past months, some will say that schools have no role in any of this, that school's only role is to teach science and social studies and English, and that we would have no place to even be thinking or talking about civic-mindedness or activism or instruction on those things. But I mentioned earlier, the bedrock of our profession, one of the oldest precepts we have, is to prepare students to take part. At Central, we've always looked for new opportunities to help our students lead in that, though we all must be able to expect respect and kindness in those moments, and our students, even in passion, must remain civil. We have more to do to teach that, we learned certainly today, and that's not something that we do just by ourselves, that's something that we all do together as a community. So we will continue to investigate and pursue all that needs to be uncovered from today and also all the lessons that we need to learn as we move forward from that very difficult afternoon.
Dr. Moore, could I just add something to that?
Yes.
I spoke at the March meeting where we had a large outpouring of public on a controversial issue, and I spoke mostly to the adults at that time, and I probably should have focused on everyone, including students. The conduct that I heard, saw on videos, the language used, the name-calling, the disrespect was embarrassing today, and I am not proud to be a parent, a community member, or a board member of Hundred and Central today, based on how some students conducted themselves. As Dr. Moore said, we support freedom of expression. This isn't about opinions or beliefs, it's about how you conduct yourself and have respectful discourse. And some of what I saw and heard that went on today by the students is just completely unacceptable. And the students really should take a look in the mirror. This is their school, this is their reputation, and I think everybody needs to really rethink how we want to express ourselves in the future.
Thank you. We have some business items that I'll talk about very quickly, and then I'd like to introduce some policies, and we have some guests with us tonight to share some experiences on the drafting of one of these key policies for us moving forward, and with a lot of relevance to our conversations already tonight. But some business items first. Tonight's agenda includes many organizational items. There are two items in there that I do want to highlight. The first is an update to this year's calendar, which follows a tradition of having early dismissals on the last two days of class, one A day and one B day, and all of the confusion around our bell schedule over the past couple of years with COVID. That didn't quite make it onto this year's draft of the calendar, so we're correcting that now. That allows our teachers and our students to wrap up their last A and B days and get all of their grades and assignments in time for graduation and the summer. The other is next year's calendar, which is also on there. We've been waiting on some clarity from the state about the use of virtual days for weather next year. You all know that the use of virtual days is limited right now to COVID-related issues. The new law would allow us to use virtual days for inclement weather, so we're moving forward without the state having resolved that question just yet, and are introducing a new holiday, that of Juneteenth, to the school calendar as well. So we'll move that calendar tonight, and if the state's rules and regs lead to any change down the road, we're ready for that. Earlier this school year, Mr. Brandt and Mr. Estrada presented on our HIB self-assessment process and presented grades that we had earned. Department of Education has certified those grades, and I've included that final grading report here tonight. Grade report also appears on the HIB page of our website. And now, we also have, before we get into some of the more involved items, HIB and suspension report for the month is on there. You do have one HIB motion for action at the end of my report tonight on a HIB incident that I reported in closed session last month. So that requires action before we move on to the rest of the agenda with the public comment and organizational items. I'd like to turn now to a couple of policies that you have, and I have copies of them here for all of you, and there are copies on the table in the back as well for the public. The two policies, and these aren't being moved tonight, just introducing them for discussion and questions. The first is, the numbering, we may not actually number it as 8100, but that's our working number at the moment, 8100 regarding equity and anti-bias. This is the policy that the board had set out as a goal to craft this year. And you also have a counseling services revision here. The reason these are coming up together is because both policies followed a very similar and very comprehensive process this year to draft what are really innovative and unique policies across our state. Typically, policies are sort of cut and paste of the law sometimes, sometimes they're very dry, sometimes they're not very directive in terms of making a board belief come to life, but both of these policies represent a different kind of approach there. So we have some members with us here tonight. I see Mr. Cohen, I see Mr. Sacks, I see Dr. Warren, and I see Amy Torres, one of our students. That's all of you guys, right? They're here tonight. They worked with our Racism Equity and Diversity Committee and with several other students who were involved in that effort to draft what you see here as the Central advocates respect and equity policy, the care policy. So in this policy, what you're seeing is a basic theory of action. If we do this, then each student will realize that. We see in the next section some commitments, student leadership and oversight, partnership with the community near and far, and so on, and you can see some red areas there where the committee is certainly eager for any board feedback on language or the points that are listed there. As we go to the back, you see now a section for each one of those bullets from earlier on how the board sees the district doing work to fulfill each of its strategic priorities here. And then it moves on at the end to a section of definitions, which we have many samples of policies across the country that list out definitions. We've had discussion in committee about definitions, that'll be added here as well. Again, this is not being moved tonight, we're just introducing this tonight for any questions or conversation, but I do want to invite Dr. Warren, Mr. Sacks, Mr. Cohen, Amy, if you have anything to share about the framing of this policy, please, by all means.
Oh, boy. We put the short one up first. Hi, everybody. I'm Dr. Lindsay Warren, I'm a social studies teacher at Hundred and Central. This is my 15th year, and I was the chair facilitator of the committee, working with Dr. Moore and the red team members from your committee, the board members. So just as a brief walkthrough how we got to this policy, we went through a couple of different phases. We actually did a research phase where we went out to sort of those in our networks and said, have you seen a good equity policy? Have you seen a good anti-bias policy? Who did it? Who made it? Who's behind it? And we contacted five different school districts to interview them based on their policies after we read them and kind of felt we had a comprehensive mix of different, just different perspectives from basically mostly the East Coast, but there was one school that we looked at from Illinois. And so we conducted interviews, we had six students with us, mostly three staff members, three administrators, and three board members kind of mixed in with the interviews, and we recorded them, and we were able to then review each of these interviews with experts who'd already done this work. And we asked them about what they'd learned and what they sort of took away, and they told us a lot more than just about their policies, so it was really informative on a number of levels. Phase two is where we brought the policy together. So we sort of took the best practices from those interviews and from the research we'd done and said, okay, what do we want our policy to look like? What do we believe at Hundred and Central with the charge that you all had as a board to have this adopted by the end of the year? And this first draft version is what you have in front of you. So I want to turn things over to Amy and some of my other colleagues to just talk about their roles or their perspectives.
Hello. I am a senior here at Central, and when I first got invited into doing like the interviews with other schools on their policy, I was very excited because a lot of the things me and my peers have talked about, about stuff that we were seeing at Central, was brought up in the original email saying what the policy would aim to kind of change stuff around. And it was good to do the interviews with students because we kind of got to see, we see everything from a different perspective from staff, just because we're here and we're going through all these things instead of just teaching, you know, whatever they teach. So it was interesting to see what worked for them and what didn't work, what we saw working for us, because, you know, it was only a few of my peers, but we've all pretty much been here for four years, so we kind of knew how our school's social dynamic works, how the cliques work, and kind of what we have tried to do through certain clubs that haven't been successful. And then we were able to kind of word it into a way that we could see our school following. And for me especially, I was focusing more on the curriculum part of the policy, just from experience of being here at Central and trying to take harder classes, but being told it's a little bit too hard, or what if you don't do good, then you'll have to drop. So I wanted to put it plain and simple, that everyone should have the opportunity to bump up, whether they want, whether the counselor sees fit or not, because especially during COVID, when we picked our classes, one of my friends told me, hey, take this class, like, we have same grades, we've been taking the same math classes, why aren't you up at this level? I took that class, I pushed myself up against what my counselors said to take a tougher English class, honors. I'm doing much better in that than I was doing in my regular English class. And a lot of it was just talking to my peers and saying, no, like, this is what I want to do, these are the classes I want to take, and thriving in them. So I'm very excited to see how this policy will play out, because I think it shows a unique perspective on how little changes in just the way Central is can really have a huge impact on students. And ultimately, we all come here freshman year, and we're kind of just like, okay, like, cool, like, we'll get through this. But we've all gone so passionate about making sure the school's more equitable for each of our peers, because in the end all, we've all come together like a community, and all my peers were kind of just saying like, oh, like, we all just broke it down to just sharing experiences. What are some experiences we had here that we don't want other people to go through? And then being like, oh, wait, I had that same experience, but since we don't talk about them, we didn't know this was a reoccurring just things, whether it was academic or socially. And then we were able to kind of just put it into words on what we wish we would see at Central, or lift up, and then it kind of just all pieced together and then ended up making sense. But yeah, it's pretty much how I experienced it. It was really fun, too.
Thank you.
Good evening. Scott Cohen, business educator here at Hundred and Central Regional High School, and I just first want to thank the board for allowing us to be included in this conversation, particularly our young adults that are rising up through the ranks here at Hundred and Central. I couldn't have been more proud to have had student engagement and involvement in this work, because it's about them and the needs that they feel are not being addressed by the school. So it's an honor to be included, because the students need to be heard, and that's what we're here to do as educators, that's what you're here to do to support us as educators, and we thank you for doing that. So I just want to put that out there first and foremost. As both a parent of a child with a disability, those in the disability community often marginalized, I think this policy reflects the notion of making sure that all students are visible and heard and seen and respected and regarded in the ways that everybody wants to be treated, respected, and regarded. So I think the framework that we've started to establish, Dr. Warren put it out very well, Warren put it out very well in terms of the framework of how we started to frame it out. I found it interesting that over the past probably couple of months, the level of activity across school districts across New Jersey have been addressing bias, anti-racism, and equity policies. And I think in recent events that happened this past weekend in Buffalo, and in light of other incidences, that this policy is really timely and super important. So I thank you, I look forward to the additional work we're going to do, and the good work that we're going to deliver for the students at Hundred and Central.
I'll get that in a second. Hi, everybody, I'm Scott Sacks, and I guess just to add, it was very enlightening to be able to work with Amy and the other group of five students, being able to come together and actually hear their words and their experiences in order to draft this policy. And I guess one of the things, additional thing to add, is that it's very, it's very hard to be up here, isn't it? But really, the one thing I wanted to add to is that we were looking at schools, one of the things I was like, what schools are we going to be looking at? We looked at schools that were very similar to the population and demographics as ours as well. So that was very enlightening to be able to kind of see what they're doing in respects and what's working in their schools. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you all for adding your insights and your experiences to our conversation here tonight. It was amazing to work with you three, and Amy, you and your peers, it was an incredible project. And with Mrs. Hughes, Mr. Richard, who's not here tonight, but Mrs. O'Donnell was involved certainly as the chair of our Racism Equity Diversity Committee in this policy framing too. So tonight, if any thoughts from the board in particular, those areas in red that are denoting the board's commitments, we commit, you know, the board's commitments, and the committee had several thoughts about what board commitments might look like, but ultimately wanted to respect that the question of board commitments was a question for the board. So now, later in committee, however, your, any thoughts you have to add in here on the text you see there, by all means, floor is open for any thoughts or questions now on this policy. Anything at all?
I'd like to first of all congratulate the committee I'm putting together. This is quite an impressive and comprehensive policy. I actually don't have a whole lot to add, because I really did cover everything. One question, though, under accountability, when you talk about a formal and safe mechanism for sharing, I'm just sort of curious what you envision that. I would assume it would be some sort of confidential way for people to share. Didn't know if the committee talked about that at all.
So I think that's what our conversations were about, of ways in which, because to Amy's point, are people free, do people feel free to talk about these things and share what might be common experiences, and then realize that these are common experiences? And then, how do we come to know them as common experiences so that we can act on them? People put themselves on a limb when they talk about these things, certainly. So making it easier, making it safer, and I think that goes everywhere from making sure staff are equipped to open those conversations in a safe and inquisitive way, but also making sure that we have anonymous reporting abilities that our students can take advantage of as well. So the implementation of this now is in front of us as we work on it and move to approve it in the coming couple of months. That would be a piece then that we'd be looking to design and then going back out to other schools to see what they're doing. We do have some anonymous reporting features now, but they're generally used more to report kind of infractions as opposed to culture and experience, which is something that we're looking to get more from here as well.
If I could just add to that, one of the things that one of the districts, Mr. Sacks and I think Rego interviewed, they utilized an app that we had talked about a bit, where you can do anonymous reporting, and that was a pretty cool tool, particularly for this age group, for reporting of biased incidents. So that's something that we could possibly look into down the road.
Yeah, and if I could add, one of the conversations we had was about the policy having an ability to self-reflect, because we heard from Amy tonight, and these are the voices that are really integral to this process. This is who this impacts directly and who needs to be hands-on, front and center. So we did talk about the idea of sort of encouraging like a living time capsule, of hearing from graduates that are, that would like to go on record or would like to be anonymous, but we have heard from past students, their experiences here. So we encourage that kind of data collection, for, you know, a kind of clinical term, but we would like to hear in any form students' experiences here after they've left, so we can, going forward, reflect on those and collect them and try to gauge, are we progressing? Are we, you know, not doing anything? Because the kids will tell us, they'll know.
Okay. Other thoughts, questions? Again, it's not for motion tonight, but we'll continue to share as we sort of craft the language around those points. If anything strikes you, by all means, don't hesitate to share, either now, later on during our board business section, or as we come up into committee meetings in next month. The second policy here is a revision to an existing policy, so the care policy would be a new policy. This is a revision to policy 2411, which is our counseling services to policy, and it's a full-on revision. We have kind of a boilerplate policy from our policy vendor that includes some language from statute and code and regulation, but this came about from a similar process, working with staff. Mrs. Hughes, Mrs. Kellogg, were both involved in this committee deeply to try to reimagine the role of counseling in our school. And you see a similar framework here. There's a problem statement up front with a theory of action, and then moving through different sections to tackle that, three bullets, the three bullets of that theory of action in succession. At the end here, it's not printed in red, but it's a similar situation. We have an accountability section, which again is about the board and the administration's accountability to implement this policy, to report on it, and also to revisit it on a regular basis. And that's a similar feature that we're working on for the equity policy, that the policy itself is going to set a timer for revisiting it and revising it to make sure that it stays relevant. So sometimes the problem statements get very specific. Every couple of years, we'll need to revise those, based on the measurements that we've taken and the things that we've accomplished. So this is another policy, again, not for motion tonight, but for introduction as a discussion item for you. Any thoughts or questions on this policy?
So again, under the accountability for this one, the one thing that kind of stood out to me for the goal setting is just when you work on that, to have something maybe in terms of a timeframe for counselors to meet with the students, especially in terms of a timeframe for counselors to meet with the students, especially for our freshmen coming in, you know. So we're talking about them really getting to know the students. So I think that initial meeting happening on a timely basis is pretty important.
Thank you. Okay. Timeframes and goals based on, yeah, so the goals sort of reflecting all of the important pieces up above. So if we're talking about relationships, we have to measure relationships, and we have to set goals for around, you know, under what timelines are those formed, and to what effect. Absolutely. Thank you. Other thoughts or questions on this one? Nope. All right. So these both will be coming back to you. Again, if anything strikes you through the meeting that you want to bring up later on during board comment, or at any other point, as we, again, move into committee meetings in June, we hope to start to bring these forward for approval next month. The last piece I have in here, and I'll give a quick introduction, and then I'll allow anyone certainly to fill in the blanks. There's been an ad hoc committee of various board members meeting. Dr. Charney, Mr. Davidson, Mrs. Hughes, and Mrs. Kellogg have been meeting together. And you were chairing this, correct? Yes, Ms. Kellogg has been the chair of a committee to structure the board's summer retreat. So you've seen some correspondence from me asking you about dates. And there are a couple of different threads of that conversation. One certainly is what should the retreat look like in terms of its activities, its structure, the structure of conversations, the specific kinds of things we want out of each of those sections. But tonight, what I brought to you all was a list of topics that the committee had developed, just to see if there were topics here that you wanted to specifically highlight for the committee, or if there are additional topics that you feel might be missing, that you'd like to make sure the committee considers as it frames the retreat experience. And Ms. Kellogg, anything to add to that introduction?
Just a few things. I will say, I did not have a full appreciation for the complexity that planning this retreat was going to involve. So we did, we've gone through several drafts of agendas, and attempted to lay out what we thought was going to be a meaningful couple of days. And I think it really, all the discussions brought us back to, we need input from the full board to make this a valuable exercise. So I guess, if you are adding topics, I would ask you to explain why we think we need to address the topic, and what exactly the concrete steps coming out of it, or, you know, what the plan should be coming out of it. Because discussing things for the sake of discussing things is not a great use of the board time. So. Lisa or Bruce, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Nope. I think that covers it. I just think getting a date set is going to be our biggest priority and our biggest challenge. So if we could, if anybody, I know, we've been soliciting dates from folks, so if you haven't responded to Dr. Moore as to sort of blackout dates, please get back to him ASAP so that we could focus on two days. We're looking to do two half-days like we did last summer. Our initial thought was to do them back-to-back, or maybe just a day in between, as opposed to a week in between like we did last time, just to sort of keep the momentum going. But I'm not sure if that's going to work. We'll see. The other idea we had was to bring in an independent facilitator. So we've talked about some folks. We've gotten some referrals, some from some of our board members, just to bring in an independent person to sort of channel all the expertise we have on the board, and to allow Dr. Moore to participate as a board member, and not have to worry about time management and some of the other logistics. So that is the other thing that we'll be doing differently this year, is having an independent person come in to, a consultant to work with us. So dates and finding that person are really our highest priorities, and then we have a little bit of time to refine the agenda.
Anything strike, anyone from the list to mention now, or anything missing from the list that anyone wants to make sure that we bookmark now?
Well, I think the new member orientation, I know we discussed that a year ago. I think that's huge. I know Bruce had talked about it, too, last time. I'm in my fourth year on the board, and I think it was only a year ago that I really started feeling comfortable about things, you know, not knowing certain processes. And I think that's kind of big. Somebody new gets on the board, that they have, even if there's an outline or something that somebody goes through with them, or they have a board buddy or something like that, that they have, that they can throw, you know, bounce things off of, I think that's pretty big.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nicol. Others?
Yeah. Hit your button there. Bruce, hit the button on your microphone. Hold it down.
The newness of us thinking about an independent facilitator, because I think it would be very beneficial. Allowing Dr. Moore to contribute as a member removes from him the necessary task of herding the cats, and being able to sit back and look at things and contribute in a way that wasn't able to the last time. I think that's going to be very positive for us. The topics, I think, are pretty comprehensive. I think that they're of enough concern that we have plenty here to occupy, to occupy the time. I would also expect that we might add a piece of discussion of the RED policy we just had, because there's some items on it that are not complete and may need or may want comment. That would be my only suggestion. Not that there's a lot of time for it, but maybe we should insert a review of where we are with that, since the board is going to be together, and we're going to be in the middle of trying to finalize and implement it. I guess that's it.
So sort of a next steps implementation on the equity policy? Got it. Okay.
Another, just a quick comment on that. This is a tremendous policy. It is so comprehensive, and it considers so many factors, that I am wondering that can we implement it all in one year? Might we think about doing it in stages or phases, so that we can manage all of it? Because just in keeping track of the accountability part, establishing norms and measures, the load can be, there are so many things for us to accomplish here, that I think it might be something we, that's something we might want to discuss, is phasing in over maybe two years, this giant policy that we have.
Well, I think beyond two years, I think it's many, 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 many years that this work is never done, and especially when we continue to revisit the policy in years ahead. But it could be, and I've taken a note here on the topics for our retreat, could be important in our retreat to talk about, you know, where to prioritize beginning efforts based on what we're seeing coming out of the past couple of school years in this. Yeah. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. All right. So anything else on the retreat topics, then, from anybody?
If I may, just to clarify the consultant role. It's not just facilitator. A consultant would share their expertise in whatever topic we feel we could use some direction. So my suggestion was things like leadership and communication. There's a lot of expertise out there that can lend some clarity to how we operate as a board. So I wanted to make that point for the public, that it's just not a facilitator that we're looking for. It's a person that has the experience and the expertise to effectively drive a more efficient and thorough board practice and operation.
Thank you, Dr. Charney. Thank you. Other thoughts? Okay. All right. So with that, just to recap some of the unique action items on the agenda here tonight. From my report, you do have a HIB motion. That's number three under my report. The HIB grades are there, but don't require action. You've already heard the report from Mr. Estrada and Mr. Brandt. Then we have our residence forum, and then there are multiple organizational items that all need to be moved, which we can talk about as we get into that section. Any questions you have about those individually? But I highlighted specifically the calendar changes there. Yes, and those will be moved next meeting. Most of this stuff is moved next meeting. It's just here for discussion. Thank you. Okay. So the HIB item definitely needs to be moved next for us tonight. So with that, I conclude my report. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Can I have a motion to affirm HIB HC2122-048?
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
I'll abstain. I wasn't here.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nicol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, with one abstention, motion carries.
Thank you.
Dr. Moore, do you want to go through the organizational items, or would you like me to?
So we have residence forum.
Oh, correct. Thank you for reminding me that. Thank you. So now it's time for our first residence forum, for items that are on the agenda for action tonight. There will be a later one for general comments. If anyone's here to speak on the agenda, action items, you can come up to the podium, state your name and residence. You have five minutes to speak. Yes. Is this an item for action on the agenda?
That's not being moved. So if you want to save it till later.
Yeah, that's, none of those policies are being moved, voted on tonight. So it's just action item, meaning the board is voting. So you can certainly speak in the second residence forum, okay? Thank you. So anybody to speak on items on the agenda that are being voted on by the board tonight? Okay. Hearing none. Organizational items. Dr. Moore, do you want to?
Yeah. So annually, at this time, we take on the effort after the budget has been approved, and as we move into the summer, looking toward the end of our fiscal year, at the end of June, there are several things that we begin to approve for next school year. So these are annual motions that we have, everything from re-adopting booster clubs. I mentioned the calendar revision for this year, which is not an annual thing that we do at this time, but just it fits into this section of the agenda. You see also next year's calendar draft. We have various state-required officials whom we have to appoint, and you can see that under number four. And that's everything from the role of Board Secretary and Custodian of Records, which Mrs. Spitzer occupies most ably, to our various specialists, Title IV, Section 504 ADA Compliance Officers. All of these are required by law, and each of these individuals has specific responsibilities under those roles, and sometimes there's even additional training that's required for them to fulfill those roles. For example, you know, an affirmative action investigation in school, for example, could receive, the person in charge of that could receive specific training. We also have, under organizational items, our various service providers being appointed again for next year, everything from legal to different kinds of evaluations that we do with special services and other students in need. Our Health Benefits Advisor, these are our benefits advisors who work directly with staff on issues, again, as a service, need to be reappointed each year. And then various others here, state contract vendors, disclosure agents, et cetera, on through cooperative purchasing, who is authorized to sign checks. It's all here. Now, we are not moving on all these items tonight. We're not moving on any of these items tonight. So we'll be filling in the notice of scheduled meetings for the 2223 school year after a little bit more discussion. I know that's a conversation we've had under number 13 about, you know, currently, we run the two meetings per month. We just want to make sure that that's what the board is anticipating, or maybe taking a different direction as we head into the next school year. And there's also certainly here two items at the end that allow us to implement the budget that was approved most recently. So item number 14, and then item number 15, establishing bid thresholds under law for various purchasing actions that we have to take. So that's a quick tour of everything in that section. Again, a lot of it is annual appointments and annual motions. But are there any questions? Nothing's being moved tonight, but any questions on any of those items for us?
I just want to clarify, Dr. Moore, will all of these items be moved next week?
Yes.
Okay. I know particularly next year's school calendar, parents are anxiously awaiting.
Yeah.
The only thing that may not be approved is based on whether or not we have a board calendar. That might be getting bumped till June.
Correct. Okay. But the school calendar will be?
School calendar will be approved, yes. The state's deadline for approving the school calendar is the end of May, so we are under a state deadline there as well.
Any discussion about any of those items? Okay. Then we'll move right into committee reports. Student Life and Programs. Who's doing that? Oh, Dee, you're doing that tonight. Thank you.
So, yes, I'm pitch-hitting this evening.
Thank you.
So, item number 1.1, we re-adopted the booster clubs and groups. That's just something that we do every year. And we discussed, it's an organizational action item. I guess I'll clarify that we're not moving anything this evening. Ms. Canjeluzi-Hayd provided brief information about the tuition and transportation agreements. We discussed the summer 2022 programs. There are three separate programs. There's Courses for Advancement, offering of summer bridge and enrichment programs, as well as additional offerings for English language learners. And there's more information on the website on all those programs. Teen Pep, which is the Pregnancy Education Prevention Program, is run by the Center for Support of Schools, and they've requested a memorandum of understanding for that program. So that is a health class for juniors and seniors that trains students in leadership and sexuality issues. And then we have policies for second reading, and there are several policies for first reading. The first is the postnatal accommodation for students. So this is for nursing and expressing mothers. The second policy is pupil intervention and referral services. There's also an update for the harassment, intimidation, and bullying policy, and one for emergency and crisis situations, and cooperation with law enforcement agencies. And we did have some discussions on equity lesson planning, as well as the anti-bias and equity policy, and the counseling policy, which we've already discussed.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing to move, correct? Anybody have any comments or questions about the student life presentation?
I have a question on the bridge program. So how do we identify students that should be in this program?
So we have various summer programs. So some of them are credit recovery. So those are students who failed a class and are looking for an opportunity here with a staff member here to recover that credit. There are other ways students can recover credits, but that's one way. Original credit courses we have, we do offer over the summer on a volunteer base, well, on a selection basis, if students want to take a full 120-hour math course, for example. We offer several of those over the summer for students to close any gaps they might have experienced on their way to high school. Enrichment courses, everything from language enrichment to, for our English language learners, to other kinds of study skills, kinds of courses. Extended school year for our special education program as well. This year, talking a lot about the need for bridge programs as students move from middle school into high school. So our school-based youth services, for example, last year ran a program in which they were running tours and workshops for students who were coming to Central as new students. So we're looking to potentially replicate that. That was a student selected to be in that program, though our school-based folks did reach out to some specific families. And we're also looking at potentially what kinds of bridge programs might be required for students who might be moving from one course level into a higher course level, but may need some help closing gaps before they take on that next level of course. So for example, a student who is taking their first honors course, what are the kinds of summer opportunities that they might benefit from to make sure that they are fully aware of and ready to tackle the demands of that course? So various kinds of programs, they're not all bridge programs, but there are some bridge programs in there.
Well, in the bridge program, I would highly favor, I think they're valid and they help students. But again, how do we identify, for example, in Algebra I, a freshman coming into Algebra I, whether they have the pre-algebra skills to succeed in our Algebra I, which is one of the courses throughout the state that is fairly daunting, particularly after the pandemic. There's been a great deal of learning loss, and it surfaces in math quite a bit. So I'm curious as to how we identify So I'm curious as to how we identify those students in need. If this is going to be done in the summer, it would seem to me that has to be accelerated pretty soon in order to identify those students. And I assume this is ARP-funded as well?
Elements of it are. Some of it is traditionally locally budgeted. But yeah, where we're closing gaps, we definitely have opportunities to use ARP funding for summer programs. But we also have our ESEA funding, we also have our local budget devoted in some ways to some of these programs. Bridge programs for students, particularly in math, we get a lot of information from our K8s, but it's still not consistent across each K8. They aren't all administering the same kinds of assessments, we've talked about before. One of the things that I'd like to continue to work on with them is how we can bring that together in a way where they can all participate potentially in a testing program that we can gain more data from. The state testing program hasn't delivered on that promise. Not that I want to add more testing for students, but something along the lines of a PSAT VIII would be a valuable thing for all of the students in our region to take, and then we would have the data to be able to, you know, October before, we would have the data to be able to identify in a more cohesive way who needs support. Right now, we are trusting our middle schools, and they're certainly deserving of that trust, years and years of that articulation that we've had with them to identify the students who might need some support. I am always worried about our students who come into ninth grade in Algebra I because those are students who haven't had opportunities to accelerate in math in the middle school. And so all of those students, you know, we look at with a potential for concern only because they haven't had opportunities to accelerate. So a lot of it is still self-selecting, a lot of it is through articulation with our K8s. They're identifying students for us. But we do see next levels of work there in order to get a better platform of cohesive data across the region to identify students who are at need. Thanks. All right, other questions about our organizational items? Again, nothing moved tonight in that section. Oh, I'm sorry, we were going on to Student Life and Program, I'm sorry. Back to you, Mrs. Kellogg.
Okay, we'll move on then to O and T. Mr. Nichol?
Sorry, committee, we have a couple items to move tonight, including tax levy payment schedule for sending district municipalities. We have some money going back into capital reserve for some projects that are completed, for allowances that were returned. We have a couple change orders we have to approve for future projects. We have fast food, our food, I'm sorry, food service provider renewal along with meal prices and the food price lists. Vape sensor purchases for the bathrooms, and looking to approve the application acceptance of an ERIC West Safety Grant. For informational purposes, that we're going to move next time, we have some non-tuition, non-resident tuition rates. The cooperative bid purchases for the companies that we get supplies from. We will have a policy on first reading, number 7410, for maintenance and repair. We have some FEMA funding and a grant, as well as a donation, we're going to be looking to accept. We need to approve bus transportation routes. There will also be an approval for bus, for schedule for bus evacuation drills. Every year, we do a Chromebook evaluation of $25 for Chromebooks that are not returned by seniors. We need to approve that. And we have four copiers that we're buying and seven that we're turning in, and we need to approve that as well next time. But on that, with that, I'd like to move items H1 through H8.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I just had one question, are the meal prices and food prices staying the same? No, they're going up a little bit?
We don't, we don't yet know of the continuation. I mean, I know we've been able to offer free lunches. We're not expecting necessarily that, yeah. We're expecting that to end for next school year. Got it.
Anybody else? Any questions on O and T? Can I roll call?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes. Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, Mr. Davidson?
Yes, we have a number of items tonight. The first 11 will require motions to move, and the balance of the other nine, we have a total of 20, are informational. As usual, for the Personnel Committee, we have a number of appointments to approve of different natures. First contractual, where we're moving the appointment of a counselor and two bus drivers. And then per diem appointments, four substitute teachers, for hourly's, a summer support technician. Well, there's a total of 12. Various computer support people, substitute secretaries. For a total, as I said, a total of 12, where we have an intern student teaching observer coming in from Penn State, always glad to see them. We're moving the approval of staff members to become mentors, to be pilot program mentors. 14, no, 21, a total of 21. Basically, for the, I guess it's for the summer, or for, yeah, a month, two months.
I'll speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, okay, please, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, finish your report.
Yeah, the total of 21. And number nine is a revision of a job description for Dean of Students, and I would appreciate you speaking about that. 10 is Personnel, is revisions to jobs, and you'll see the revisions there. There are 14 revisions. And finally, a settlement agreement, which we have previously discussed. Okay, and, yes? Oh, okay. And you suggest we move one and two?
I think you just missed these first three from the first page that we're moving tonight.
Oh, okay, that would be the retirements of Robert Fodor, Annalise Nefusi, and Deborah Schiff. And resignations of Beth Lander and Joshua Ugaldi. And finally, unaffiliated certificate administrators, non-tenured, to approve them. Oh, yes, there's one very important administrator. And we certainly don't want to miss him. I'm glad we're getting him appointed tonight, and it will be moved. And so I move items 1 through 11 in Personnel. You want me to discuss that?
Yeah, sure, why don't you talk about the informational ones as well?
Okay, the informational ones run from the fact that we're approving and starting dates for our bus drivers, and we have 48 of them. We're creating a new position for a secretary that Dr. Moore will no doubt mention. Contractual appointments, there are three of them. They're actually the same people that were noted in the beginning, but now are being given a contractual total position, not just a revision. Special Services Child Study Team members, 13 of them, which are going to work through the summer, I guess, recommended, right. We have Special Services IEP meetings, 18 people that will be attending those. Coaches, Schedule D. We have two new coaches, soccer coaches. And that is, that's a positive. And we, and we have professional development tonight for six people on the agenda. And a policies first reading, a policy called Examination for Cause. And finally, a campus summer reception. In the kids coming, in the summer operation, we need to have security at the front desk, and those jobs are paid for on a daily per diem basis. And those are the 20 items for Personnel. And I do have a motion, I did make a motion for 1 through 11.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do I have a second?
Just a second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on any of the items?
Yeah, a couple of things here. So we did a lot of our reappointments last month. There are certain individuals, myself, who, being one of them, whose appointments need to go through some additional steps with the state, so they linger on now through the next few months. You'll see a couple of other appointments as we move forward as well. And we also have here, which was the one I was, oh, the Mentorship Pilot Program, and then Dean of Students I'll mention as well. We have this opportunity through some of our ARP SIR grant money to work with one of our partners, the Center for Great Expectations, who've done a lot of training with our staff and a lot of work with our students, to put together a cohort of staff mentors. And you can see the list of 21 there. We're involving these folks in some additional training right now in a pilot project to see how it works for these individual staff members to be paired up with individual students who are having trouble this school year, behavioral trouble, trouble in their studies, trouble just sort of fitting into the large campus here. So these 21 individuals will serve as mentors, they'll do check-ins. We're going to have other services and other things available for those students as a pilot project to see if this has any efficacy for improving conditions for some kids on campus. So we are eager to learn from this and certainly help those students along the way. But the thought is, what are the lessons we can learn to bring this to a much greater scale in years ahead? The second item that I wanted to talk about here is the Dean of Students Job Description. Mr. Brandt was our first Dean of Students, and when Mr. Brandt became principal, this left this position open. And we're revising the position to include some additional priorities that the state has noted are necessary in schools moving forward. And one of them is to begin to put some coordination around our equity policy efforts. So not just wellness, but also equity is a function of this job as well. There are a couple other changes to the job description, but you have the final version of it there. The key thing there being the addition of equity priorities, some closer work with our student clubs, and a couple of other duties that are laced in there. This position's already in the budget. So once the job description revision is approved here, I can move to begin to fill that position as we head into next school year. And this is a good time of year to be doing that right now as people are, before we hit the summer. There was one other item that I wanted to mention in the informational. So we have some summer work that we're teeing up here. I do want to point out, if you look at number 15, for example, you can see that we have an hourly rate through 630 of 22 for individuals. And then it says remuneration pending settlement of the HCEA contract. After July 1, or after June 30, rather, we're theoretically under a new contract, so we can't approve at that rate. All of those folks would be either relisted, or we would have the rates approved under separate motion for you separately once those are determined through the negotiations process. And then I think that's all that I wanted to highlight, unless there are other questions, certainly. Oh, and I do also want to congratulate our three folks who are on here for retirement, who have a combined few decades there of experience in service to the district. We're going to miss all of those, all of those folks.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Anything else before we take a roll call vote? Okay, Mrs. Spitzer.
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol? Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. Mrs. O'Donnell, do you have an update for the racism, equity, diversity committee?
I don't. Our official update was really the opening of the meeting. So really amazing progress, and just want to thank Amy for being here again tonight, and Scott, Lindsay and Scott.
The other Scott.
Yes, but thank you, guys. This is really, really quite an accomplishment here, so.
Okay, that closes out our committee reports. We'll move on to the second residence forum. If you'd like to come, please step up to the mic, state your name and residency. You have five minutes to speak. An alarm will go off at four minutes, just so you have notification that you have one minute left. No one may speak more than once or on the same topic until all others who wish to speak have been heard.
Hi, my name is Lisa Santangelo. I'm from Reddington Township. I just had a question regarding the Teen Pep with regard to the memorandum of agreement. I was just curious how you guys come about selecting the Center for Supportive Schools. I took a look at, well, first of all, it mentions that there's five to eight stakeholders, which includes parents and community representatives and/or others. I'm curious who the others would be and how you would select those individuals. The other thing that I found interesting on the website was they talk about anti-racism resources. I know this is about sexual health, but it's the same organization. Some of the things that they're talking about are, "We stand with those who are abused by this country's system for no other reason than the color of their skin." They're talking about the 1619 Project, the Case for Reparations, systematic oppression, white privilege, how to unpack that. Seven Tips for White Parents to Talk to Their Kids About Police Murders of Black People. I don't know, I mean, this is a little bit disturbing. You know, one of the signs is Black Lives Matter, and I absolutely agree with that. In fact, in my personal experience, a very good friend of mine, who I've been friends with since 14, married a black person who had children, they had children together. We took family vacations together with my son. And interestingly enough, in over the 20 years that they've grown together, they've never asked about the color of each other's skin or anything to do with that. And I felt like, you know what, it brings about unity, love, bonding relationship. I think when you focus on stuff like this, it does the complete opposite, which I feel like we saw here today. So I'm just curious how you would go about selecting an organization. Project 1619 has been debunked by scholars and historians. A lot of this stuff is inaccurate. And I don't have an issue, obviously, with Black Lives Matter. I have an issue with the organization. The organization themselves, when you went on the website, not now, because they scrubbed it, but I have a screenshot of it, is basically disabling the nuclear family. That was one of their goals on their website. The other thing that they talked about was who they are, self-proclaimed communists. So again, I obviously don't have an issue with the concept. The actual organization and some of these things that they're talking about speaks to who those people were. And it's interesting how they scrubbed the website. I screenshotted, if anyone's interested in seeing it, because people started to talk about it, and they didn't want to, obviously, let people talk about that. Not to mention that the funds that they acquire, they spent on, you know, million-dollar homes, and they didn't use it for the people that were intended to be used for. So I have an issue with that. So I'm curious how you guys go about selecting that organization. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sue Duggan. I'm from Ringo's. I wanted to start, I wish I could project something for you. I was wondering if I might be able to play it and then email it to all of you? A video, just so you can hear some stuff?
You can share it with the board through email.
Yeah, you can email it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you'd like to email it to me, I'll be sure to share it with the rest of the board.
Okay, so the email is, it's basically a video of what happened today. And, you know, it's about a two-minute video, just clips of what happened. I mean, just seeing the mobs of kids that were out there, the chanting. I mean, just seeing the mobs of kids that were out there, the chanting, I mean vulgarities. There were people that didn't necessarily agree with what they were protesting for, or whatever the heck they were doing out there, and they were shouting profanities at these people. They literally were physically accosting them. There was a physical altercation. I just want the board to know, like, how bad it was, and I want you to see this video. I see the video, and I'm absolutely outraged that this happened on our school grounds. And what I ask is, how is it that the students can leave their classes in the middle of the school day and go outside and do this without any fear of being discriminated, or disciplined? How can they not have any fear of being disciplined in this high school? Have we lost control of this high school? Like, what happened today? Unbelievable. You guys are going to see this video, and it's going to fire you up. If it doesn't fire you up, then, you know, you know, you guys are all here because you care, right? I just, I don't know how we get a hold of this and get control of this. But safety was an issue today for a lot of kids. Safety was a huge issue. We take care of our kids, and we send them to school. We want them to be safe. They were not safe today. We allowed the kids to go out there, and I will show you on the video, principals, teachers, everyone was here. Everyone was walking around amongst the kids. There were police officers. Nothing was getting stopped. They were just standing there, letting it all happen. So, you know, it, it's so disturbing to me. I, I want you guys to see this, and I think we need to do it. There's got to be some kind of action. You know, I know we want the kids to be adults. I know we want the kids to speak for themselves, but this, out of control. And if this was out of control, this may not be the last time this happens because it seems like things are getting more and more out of control these days. So let's keep an eye on it, okay, because I don't know how far this is going to go, but this was absolutely ridiculous.
Hi, I'm Nicole Pagano, and I'm sophomore here. So I want to go off of the whole incident that happened today. So I, I am part of it. So I am, I am peaceful, I went up to the peaceful protest that was happening. And I had my sign, because I wanted peaceful protest with them, and I had a sign that said equal rights for the babies in the wombs. So I went up and I was peacefully protesting with them. And I went myself, and I got myself into this hostile, like, situation that felt that I was being threatened by the pro-choice groups of the students. I felt that the security and the students, and the students were, like, coming at me directly, and they were verbally and physically assaulting me. I've had one, a senior girl come up to me, and because I was holding the sign, she grabbed my arm and was, like, yanking on it because I was peacefully not saying a word. I was just walking, holding the sign. As I was walking, she, they, there's like a mob full of these students, like, like hundreds of students, like, coming at just me. And they literally grabbed my arm. They were scratching me. They took my posters, threw it on the ground, stomping all over it. I just was, I couldn't believe it, what was happening. I was like, how am I, how is this getting allowed? How is the schools, like, how is the school getting, like, how are they getting away with this? Like, I'm feeling, like, attacked. And they're, like, literally coming at me. And I'm like, I'm just here to try to peacefully protest my side of view. And clearly, I couldn't, I wasn't, I wasn't safe in that position. I felt like teachers, police that were there were not helping me. I felt, like, trapped of all the people, all the kids, like, running at me. And I was just trying to stand there with my, like, the protest. I'm just, I can't, I, there's like no words I can say. That's just, I just, like, I can't. It's, it's like, it's heart, it's hurtful, hurtful.
Thank you, Nicole, for sharing that. Nicole, could you just please state where you live for the record? What town?
Uh, Reddington.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Jarrett, Flemington. A couple of things. I just wanted to bring up the draft of policy 8100. Happy to see this. It's about equity. I did email Ms. O'Donnell a while ago when we first heard about this, and I just wanted to make sure that every ethnicity was represented and the people, the group who put this together, the students who worked on this. You know, there was representation. My kids are mixed. Their father's black. And I just wanted, I know the background of this school, and there's a lot of, there's been a lot of racial issues. So it was very important to me to know that there would be an African-American student who represents my kids on this committee. So I just wanted to ask that because I see going in the future for building structures. Again, there's here a student-driven committee, and I would like to know, how will that committee be formed? Is it voluntary? How was this committee who worked on this policy formed? Again, was it voluntary? How, how was it picked? And also, again, I would like to see representation of every ethnicity of the students who do come to this school. So that's my main concern, and I was just wondering, I don't know, if you can tell me.
Each student representative was picked from an affinity group. So for the Black Student Union, I could be a two representative, but the storm's kind of grossed out, so a lot of them are juniors, and they couldn't drive over here. But, like, we have the Latin, X-Files, and Muslim Student Alliance. So each clique kind of chose someone who they felt could adequately represent them. And then after each of the meetings, we were instructed to delegate three other people and kind of receive, well, skin.
They were represented well. Okay, thank you. That was a concern.
We also have, like, everything, even trade, white, black, everyone.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So that's actually a segue, this policy here, into what was completely disgusting, what happened here today. You want to put these policies in place that say to fight against biased discrimination and equity? And because a couple, small handful of students did not go along or did not have the opinion and who are peaceful of the majority of these students mobbing them? I mean, I, I've seen these videos. It's disgusting. And I saw the officers. I saw school leaders there. No one did anything. No one did anything, didn't see it, so maybe they separated it. But where were they when these kids were harassed, physically, verbally assaulted? HIV reports. I, I hope the parents of these kids who happened to go press charges to the police station. This was absurd. And what really disturbed me, I'm, like, shaking even more, Mrs. Tucker's email. That was the most disgusting representation and explanation of what happened here because it, it did not even say what really happened. It was so dismissive and made it sound like, oh, you know, both sides kind of got into it. That's, no, that is not what happened. And that, I, I remember there, there was a racially charged, politically charged incident with students here. I saw Dr. Moore's email. It was so, you know, going on about what happened, how it was horrible, and addressing it to the reality of what it was, which it should be. It should be addressed in reality. This was not, this was not about fighting against biased discrimination and equity. I don't care what your opinion is. I don't care what you believe in. It matters. Everyone's opinion matters, and they should not be mobbed. I mean, this, this is disgusting. I can't believe this happened at this school, and I'm so glad my daughter's graduating this year. It, this, it's just getting worse and worse here, and I really hope policies and the, I hope a real email gets written and sent to the parents to tell them what really happened here because it's unacceptable. And quite honestly, I don't see the board being a very diverse group and representing everyone. Just, I, I'm new to coming to these meetings and going, hopefully in the future, there, there will be more of a diverse board here to represent everyone because it seems like people here might be catering to something, but they're not really living by what they are saying and they're about.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarrett.
That's all.
Anybody else?
Sure.
Hi, my name's David Rizza. I'm from Reddington Township. I have two questions. I know you guys generally don't answer, or sometimes you do, so hopefully after this you could just answer them. They're kind of quick questions. The first one is, last board meeting, you had mentioned due to the census that the election's changing, and they go from four seats to two seats. And I know that kind of changes how the election was going to go because one of the Reddington seats was up for election in November. Just what seats are going to be up in November and when that's going to occur? So just let us know, like, how the elections are going to go. The second thing is, I haven't read policy 8100 before, so I just read the first sentence. I think it's great that you're doing it. Every student should be treated equally, so it's fantastic that you have this policy. But I'm just going to read the first thing, and I just want to ask a question on it. The Hundred and Central Regional High School District recognizes that any equity exists in our school community as a result of historical patterns of bias, and that this inequity expresses itself through disproportionalities in opportunity, access, participation, achievement, discipline, and belonging. So two things come out of the, on this for me. The first is that it exists. Okay, she acknowledged that it exists. That's good in a school community. But the one that really stood out to me was the word "discipline." And the reason why is the school, everyone at this table is in charge of the discipline, whether it be Dr. Moore through his administration, or the teachers, or the school board when you look at your HIV reports that occur. So based on this, it's saying that you guys are aware that the administration or the school board disciplines people unfairly based on race, ethnicity, color, religion, and sexual identity, and so on. So two questions on that. One, can you give, like, an example? I know you don't have to say student names or teachers or administrators, of where you've actually disciplined someone unfairly, because you say it exists in school districts, so you must know it exists, so you're addressing it, which is good. So where's an example of where that occurs? And two, how are you going to address it to make sure that the administration and the school board treats people fairly and doesn't discipline them unfairly? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vernon Williams. I'm from Raritan. Just on this gentleman's question, if you could clarify to, to all the parents that in that, that he read, it does not say that discipline was done unfairly. If you could clarify, because as I read it, it is, discipline is disproportional. And so I would like for you to then perhaps send something to, a clarification out to all parents so that we can be knowledgeable about what we are talking about. And also, I want to let you know that I have a white friend. Had it for six, 17 years. And yeah, race does come up. And, and that's just the, that's how it is in this country, especially for those of us who are of color. And we can't ignore that any longer. And I appreciate and I applaud you, board, for opening your eyes and being proactive and actually making policy to remedy this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. Is there anyone else? Okay, at this time, oh.
Sandra DeBoer, Raritan Township. I just wondered to talk about today, in the events that happened. My husband came to pick up my children. My husband was born and raised in Flemington. He is a graduate of Hundred and Central. And I have to say, he was appalled, disgusted, and shocked with what he saw today. And Mr. and Mrs. Pagano and Nicole, I want to let you know that he came home and he was, he was so upset. I know. He spoke to you. He was parked next to you, I believe. He just cannot believe that this happened at the school that he graduated from. And the first thing he did after he told me what happened is he got on the phone to all of his friends that he went to high school with and told them what happened here today. And to Mrs. Jarrett's point, you want to all sit here and tout inclusion and diversity, but you are not fair to these children today that were standing up for their rights for pro-life. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right, with that, we will close residence forum, and we will move on to board comments. A few things I want to say. I just want to clarify for folks who aren't regular attendees at the board meeting. How it works and how our board policy works is we typically do not respond to questions for a number of reasons. A lot of times, we don't have the answer, or we need a moment to process. We do take this time, board comments, to respond to anything that we can respond to in the moment if it's a relatively simple question, or we have an answer on hand. Dr. Moore may have an answer for some of the questions today. But lots of times, we can't answer. You understand, we're sitting here and, and questions are being thrown at us, which are fine and your right to do, but we sometimes need some time to process them and, and get back to you with answers. So I always encourage everyone to email me, and that's another point I just want to bring up. I am, as the president, I am the sole person who can really communicate on behalf of the board. So if you have any questions for any board member, it needs to flow through me. I always share all communications with the rest of the board, but whether it's, you know, a chair of a committee or someone else, all those communications should come through me. I do share them all with the board, and then they are noted on the agenda. So that's how the process works. So at this time, if Dr. Moore or any of the board member have any comments and anything that we can answer, we will. If not, we will make an effort to reach out by email to all the folks who spoke tonight. If there's anybody who wants to follow up with an email, feel free to email Dr. Moore or myself, or the both of us, and we will answer any questions you have. But I just wanted to clarify that process. I just want to make one personal statement. The Board of Education is elected. So folks run for these positions and are voted by residents of each of the five sending districts, okay? So this board is not appointed. The diversity reflects the constituents who elected us. Okay, so that's just one thing factually. With regard to Mr. Rizza's question, Reddington had three seats, not four, and is going to two. It is our understanding that the seat that is up for reelection, which happens to be Dr. Charney's this year, is the one that will be eliminated. So there will be no open Reddington seat this year, okay, until one, the next seat comes up for election next year. And the other thing I just want to say is, you know, we all work really hard up here to try to do what's right for the students. One of the first things I opened the meeting with was how appalled I was personally and how embarrassed I was to be a parent of students in the school, to be president of this board, and to be a community member. So for any suggestion that this board is not appalled by the conduct that happened today, I, I would suggest is a misstatement and a misunderstanding on the public's part. Some of these folks are not parents in the districts, may, may not understand the severity of what happened today. If, if a video is shared, I will share it with the rest of the board. I know some parents have more details than other board members who are non-parents, but I can promise you, knowing the rest of these folks and Dr. Moore very well, everyone is appalled by the behavior today and by what happened to our students. Everyone has a right to speak their mind and express themselves and have, has that freedom of expression. And there is no excuse for the conduct of our students today. So I just want to make that clear on behalf of myself personally, and I think I can fairly say on behalf of the rest of the board. say on behalf of the rest of the board.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything to add? Dr. Moore?
Yeah, I can wait if others.
Yeah, just, just real quick, going back to your question about seats that are available. Where in Township had three, they went to four. Three of those are up for election in November, just so you know.
Thanks, thank you. You know, some of the words from the microphone about, you know, and Mrs. Hughes at her microphone, you know, appalled, disgusting, disgraceful. And I saw some of those words kind of approaching your lips and sometimes you pulled back. But there was a moment that somebody almost said disgrace and it is, it was. And I think we opened with those thoughts definitely, that today's events were a dark, a dark day for us today on, on what, what I think could have been an exercise in civic-mindedness. And it was not. Nicole, I am so sorry. And I know Mr. Brant will wanna connect with you if he hasn't already, at least to discuss some next steps for you. The behavior today was unacceptable. It is not gonna go without consequences and it is not gonna go without investigation. It wasn't just, it wasn't just something that insulted or attacked or otherwise impacted some individual students for what they believe. It was in many ways an assault on a process that we hold dear here in the education of kids in civic participation. So very deeply troubled by it and we are certainly not done with it. That letter today was from me. Mrs. Tucker sent it, but that came from me. We certainly have a lot more to learn about this situation, but the points that we wanted to make in that letter were clearly that the behavior was unacceptable and we wanted to also ensure folks that when these kinds of things happen on campus, we do have a process and we do have partners who work with us. So those were the main points of that letter today. But I promise you, we aren't done with that situation today and we aren't done talking with students who felt like they were, they were attacked today. We certainly aren't done working with students who may have committed behavior today. That leaves us with such a disgusting taste in our mouth tonight. Couple of quick things. Mrs. Santangelo, we'll connect back with you, but the Center for Support of Schools runs the Teen Pep Program. They're in, I dare say dozens, if not hundreds of schools across the state with the Teen Pep Program. We can, I'll connect you with, with our supervisor in our curriculum office to learn more about that program as they, they do cross-age, cross-age education around decision-making, primarily around relationship health and other priorities for kids. And they've been in place for decades and they're in, they're in many, many schools across the state. But we'll connect with you with some more information on that. Let's see. I think Amy, Mrs. Jarrett, Amy helped you with your question well, but if you have more questions, don't hesitate to reach out as far as representation on the committee. We have our affinity groups that each were involved in contributing to the equity policy. Just a quick note about the reapportionment and the census reapportionment. The method that the state uses is exactly the same method that's used for Congress to determine how many seats each state gets in Congress, but our state uses it for boards of ed. In a, in a situation like ours, we have five constituent municipalities. Each one of them gets a seat, one seat. So that's five seats out of nine. Each constituent municipality gets one seat. From there, they go down the list based on population to assign the additional seats. So the larger population you have, the more additional seats you get. There's a long process to this that I can certainly share more information about. You could even track through it with the census numbers. When we asked the state, how did this happen? Population hasn't shifted terribly in some of our communities. They replied with their methodology, which made perfect sense to us ultimately, that they, you know, each of the five municipalities gets a seat and then based on population size, they dole out the additional seats. And Raritan grew, Reddington remained stable and that resulted in Raritan overtaking Reddington for that additional seat. Wasn't expected at all, but we received that notice, gosh, just only about a month ago, I believe. And regarding the, the discipline note here, discipline being disproportional is a concern. And the, one of the examples that we've talked about here on the board, in fact, if you go to our website, there's an equity page on our website that has a report on it from last spring that details a lot of the data, including discipline data that led us to talk about disproportionality. We do find concerns there in discipline patterns and you're absolutely right, Mr. Rizza. This is something that we have to own and we have to, we have to dig into and figure out what's happening there. One of the examples that we gave in the study of that discipline data, for example, was that level-one discipline. So our infractions at that low level of, does a student have their ID or not? Are they late to class? That like, these are the kinds of tier-one infractions that we have in our discipline code that we did notice disproportionality in the way students were experiencing those kinds of, those discipline responses. So for example, if, if, if a student in a particular ethnic group, for example, if that group were 4% of the population, but they were experiencing 5% of those disciplinary infractions, or they made up 5% of the population of kids who are experiencing those infractions rather, then that's a disproportionality that we have to look at. Why is that so? Is it something in the way that we're meeting out discipline? Is it something in the way that we are communicating with students? Is it something that goes deeper into the way that students are moving up through the K-8 systems that feed into us? There are lots of questions there certainly for us to unpack, but it's a disproportionately nonetheless, disproportionality rather nonetheless, and we have to work at understanding and closing that gap. So if you look on our website, on that equity page, you'll see a report that details discipline disproportionality and all kinds of other concerns that we, like many school districts, have along those lines. Different discipline practices are sometimes an answer to that. So restorative discipline, for example, working with students in different ways who are first-time offenders of different kinds of codes. That's how we approach that so that we don't create situations in which students continue to move into the discipline system in a way that exacerbates that disproportionality as we move forward. So take a look at our website for that equity page and by all means, let me know if you have any questions coming off of that. And I think, I think that's my notes from public comment. I don't know if I missed anything, please let me know.
Yeah, I'll just close the circle with Mrs. Jarrett because she had two questions sort of pending, one which Amy, thank you for answering about the makeup of students who participated in the policy. You also asked about going forward, I think, whether, whether there will be an African-American student on a committee. And if you look back at the policy, that's sort of what's in red to be worked on. So we haven't ironed out the details of the student leadership and oversight committee, but, so thank you for your input on that, but those details haven't quite been ironed out yet.
Yeah, broad representation of those with lived experience is trying to talk about the kinds of representation that we have on that student leadership. Thank you.
Okay, any other board comment? Yeah?
Dr. Moore, in reaction to today's activities at school, would it be feasible to get some sort of report on where your response activities could have been better to help mitigate the situation and hopefully allow people who were doing things in a respectful manner to do it in a safe manner as well? Feel safe and have their ability to express their First Amendment freedom of speech? Because I think that's, that's critical. Safety is critical for our students to learn and we can't affect all of the children from these seats, but we can certainly look at how the administration reacts to what they do. And that's one thing that I would like to really hear a report on eventually, please.
Absolutely, yeah. And so as we move forward to debrief and understand what happened today in a deeper way, I'll certainly be sharing those findings and those thoughts with the board, absolutely.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, with that, we're gonna close public session, move into executive session to discuss personnel, HIBs, legal.
Personnel, HIB, let me see my list here. Negotiations.
Oh, negotiations, yeah. So we'll be at least an hour, I would say, with no action. No action upon returning. Thank you. Can I have a motion? All in favor?